Right, we don't have any adjustments. We do have approval of minutes for Monday, March 21st, 2022, School Committee Meeting at 6:00 PM. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented. Thank you. Seconded? Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Public comments? Do we have anybody? Nobody? Okay. Okay. Next is Communications. We have non-committee reports.
Sure, I'll give a construction update to begin with. I spoke recently with Briggs and they are the subcontractor working on our outside air dampers. We've down at the high school and the Technical Center project with that. So Briggs has committed to resolving that issue and they're hoping to have someone here this Wednesday. My big concern in talking with them was knowing that we're kind of outside of the cold weather. We feel very confident that this is going to be the solution, but I wanted to make sure we had some assurances beyond that. And so I had a very good conversation with the owner of Briggs that they will not be leaving until it's a working system. And so that even if that is into next year. So we made plans after they get everything set this Wednesday that I'll get something in writing from them that will be able to kind of have that protection for us and those assurances. So that if there are any future issues, we can be able to address those. So that went well and they're going to be working on the project on Wednesday. This week is what they're scheduled to come and do. The other thing that we have going on at the same time is we're in the process of preparing a change order for the High School Technical Center project. That's something where there's some work that we needed to perform as the owner because we were not, the contractor wasn't going to do it. And so we took that on ourselves. And so we're in the process of kind of getting that finalized to see exactly what's done, what's needed, how much time it took, so we can put all of that into a change order. We're going to run that by our legal counsel and then we're going to present that to the contractor with that. We don't anticipate that they'll agree to that change order, but we also feel this is the next step for us as part of having them review our requisition. And we're going to try to close out the project. So that's, that's also ongoing and that's the latest step with that. So that's the construction report. We also, for the middle school, I met with Holly Hartley and Dawn Nichols recently. We toured. There was some storage space, a walk-in cooler, a walk-in freezer that was value engineered out of the original project. And so right now we're using the space over at Memorial Gym in the kitchen there. And so I put a, we're working on getting a proposal on being able to have that work and we'll try to have that look to be covered by the local bond, which was in place for us to do things that were value engineered out of the project. And then we're also putting together a quote to go over the lockers, the orange lockers and the peach tile as well. One of the challenges we have that everyone is facing is in due to labor and due to the ordering of materials, that is impacting some of the timelines. We were hoping to do some of that work in the summer. And I think we're looking at that, but we're not optimistic that that timeline is going to be able to work, at least with the kitchen work. I think we can still do some of that work for the lockers and for the peach tile this summer. So those are ongoing. We'll keep things updated that way. And then at the MCS project, we are going to be paving the fire lane. That's something that's been used the last couple of years for our pickup at MCS to be able to assist with that. And so we're looking at doing paving and we're working with Shaw Brothers to get that done during the upcoming April school vacation. Construction report. Any questions? Moving on, the High School Technical Center Schedule Advisory Committee. The committee held their last meeting on Tuesday, March 22nd. I was unable to attend. At that meeting, the committee focused on really boiling it down to three questions. What do we need in a schedule? What do we want in a schedule? And what do we absolutely, what can't we have in a schedule? And so really my understanding is that a lot of progress was made in those areas in terms of trying to boil that down. At our next meeting, we're going to finalize that work. And then I think there was also discussion at the last meeting about trying to create, to get feedback from our high school and our SRTC teachers and staff and creating, my understanding is kind of like some focus groups that would then use those questions that I just mentioned, as well as some other things, rather than a survey, but something that I think we can be able to get input from that would go beyond just a written survey to be able to get that information that will then help us build a schedule that way from the ground up. And we're looking at trying to have a meeting prior to the April vacation. And so tentatively, we're looking at Wednesday, April 13th. I'm trying to get people, gauging people's availability for that. And that would be on an early release day on the 13th. I don't know, Paula, you were at that meeting, if there's any other update? Sorry to put you on the spot, but any information that you want to share from the latest meeting?
I think you covered everything. I do have to say that it was a really, really good meeting. We had some good discussions and, you know, next steps for having those focus groups and discussing further and sort of hearing from the stakeholders is really exciting and we're looking forward to it.
And I think also the timeline was looked upon so that we can make sure that if there are going to be any recommendations or changes, that we can match that up with the timeline that would have that to have to take place. And that's not something we have to end this year with. It would be something that we'd have to have ready by next fall, next November, to be able to do that in order to impact any change to the schedule. Because right now there'll be no changes to the schedule for the upcoming 2022, 2023 school year. Anything that we need to do would be the following year. And that's something that, we knew that going in because we wanted to take our time and really make sure that we were doing this work and doing a deep, deep dive into it. So we did also review that timeline a little bit and to let people know that our work does not have to be finished right up, right at the end of the school year.
Thank you. Sanford Performing Arts Committee. Excuse me, I've got my allergies that are kicking in. So there were three full houses for Mamma Mia. I heard that it was an amazing, amazing show. I didn't get a chance to go because I had a dance competition that I had to go to and it was all weekend. But I'm very, very disappointed because from what I hear, it was amazing. I want to read Marty McKean's Facebook post, which speaks to it. Says, "I witnessed history being made today at the Sanford Performing Arts Center. A combination of very hard work, wonderful talent, technical expertise, complete dedication, and a boatload of fun made this weekend's smash hit musical Mamma Mia at the SPAC a major turning point in Sanford High School's theater and musical endeavors. Three performances in such a venue with capacity crowds who provided roaring approval and were presented with the entire theatrical performance and the musical encores." Wow. "Any student who loves singing, acting, dancing, and/or stage technical work will want to get involved in next year's program. This remarkable performance is a tribute to all of the adults and students involved, as well as to the voters of Sanford Springvale in supporting the referendum which provided this wonderful facility. Brett Williams brings his all encompassing stage directing expertise. Kristy Baker brings her golden design and organizational skills and passionately devoted musical director Jane Kirkton is sent out with a bang as she approaches retirement. One look at the professionally produced brochure shows that this effort included remarkable contributions from the terrific stage band, as well as multiple programs of the Sanford Regional Technical Center and an army of community volunteers. All of this is a beaming light of Sanford pride. As soon as next year's show is put on the 2022-23 calendar, my wife and I are ordering tickets." And from everything that I hear, I think that is the resounding opinion from everybody in Sanford. I also wanted to know what you thought, Matt, because you went to the show and...
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And John?
I would, I would echo all of Marty's comments there. I know we've been sitting here and when our student reps talk, you'd always be talking about Mamma Mia. And you were talking about, in a way that just stood out to me to say, wow, there is a real interest in Mamma Mia. And then after I saw the show, I kind of understood why, because you had to put your absolute all into that. And you delivered. We're biased with our school committee reps here and the roles that they had. But I was talking to Paula. I, in the update for the school committee, I worked hard to get that out earlier to let people know. If you didn't get there Friday, get there Saturday and Sunday, because it absolutely made my whole weekend. I was on, I was on a natural high all weekend in terms of that because it was such a, such a wonderful night, but everything came together. Everything from our student performances first and foremost, who are on the stage, but we had a number of people that were also students involved behind the stage. And it just, it feels so professional to be able to come back and see that. And it's just such a moment of pride to be able to do that. So kudos to cast and crew and everyone involved. I thought it was awesome.
Amy, do you have anything to say?
Ooh, it was amazing. Ladies did great, all your, you know, your friends and it just, it was just amazing. It was amazing. I mean, when I read Mr. McKean's post Sunday night, I was like, you couldn't have worded it any better. Everything he wrote was like on point, so.
I'm really disappointed that I missed it, but my two oldest daughters went to see it Friday and Saturday and they kept giving me like act-by-act commentary about it. So I feel like I watched it.
Okay. So there we go. Some Performing Arts Center. Okay, superintendents reports.
And I'll, I think it's probably time to fit this in too, that we have a, this year we were not able to have Band Fest in person, but we did a virtual Band Fest. And so that world premiere is happening tomorrow, April 5th, on WSSR. And that will be happening at 6:00 PM. We had 230 band students involved in that. And then that will be followed up on Wednesday night, April 6th. And that will be the virtual spring sing. That'll also be at 6:00 PM and there are 100, almost 150 students there in grades four through 12. So I'll date myself here, but I feel like I'm on MTV when I'm talking about a world premiere video. That used to be a pretty big deal back in the day, these world premiere videos. So we've got these world premieres starting this week on Tuesday, the 5th and Wednesday, the 6th at 6 o'clock. Tune in for that.
You have dated all of us. Okay, superintendents reports. Student representative reports first.
Probably a nice segue to talk to our stars here with that.
Go ahead, girls.
I will start. I'm just going to reiterate what you guys said. We did sell out or we almost sold out for all three shows. And the crowd, like, it just really helps because during COVID, when we did the show must go on, the crowd wasn't as big. And so it was nice to see how supportive everybody was and we kind of fed off the energy of the crowd. And so it was really, it was fun to be back on stage and it was a good way to go out, I think, as a senior. I'm really hoping I get to keep the costume because it was pretty, it was, it was awesome. But we're still talking about it. Next, we, NHS is having their variety show on Thursday and that is at 7 o'clock. I think we have over 20, a little over 20 acts. And it's going to be really awesome. I was able to be a part of the audition process. And we have a lot of singers and musicians and I even know one janitor, he is going to do a dance number for us. So I know that's why I'm going, just to see that. And then spring sports has kicked off and it's really in the swing of things. So just whenever you can, go support your teams and show them some love, so.
Yeah, so just to expand a little bit, on the Friday show, we've got about 20 acts. Like Grace said, we even have, most of them are music acts and like really, really talented kids, students in our school and also some people from our community. I know we've got a poetry reading and a beatboxing act as well, so that should be exciting. We'll have raffle tickets there, so the whole thing is a fundraiser for NHS and for our school. And so when you get your ticket at the door, I believe it's $5 for adults and $3 for seniors and students, you'll get a raffle ticket and then we'll also be selling extra raffle tickets throughout the show. We have lots of really cool raffle items, lots of gift cards for local businesses and stuff like that. And then some cool items as well. It's going to be really fun, kind of family, community event, just for everybody to kind of see the talent we have and connect and have a good night. We also are having the farmer's market on May 7th, which is Mother's Day weekend. That's our first opening day. It's 8 to 12 PM. We have a bunch of new things coming to kind of really connect with both schools and students and their families to get them, to have it be a really community-involved event where, where parents and families can make a day of it, where they can come visit and find some cool things to do for both kids. And then as well as get your fresh veggies, flowers, baked goods, all those kinds of things. That should be really exciting as well.
Okay, thank you. Field trips.
Sure, so we have one that took place this past week and weekend. That was the New England District Event for Engineering Robotics that took place in Durham, New Hampshire. And then we have one that took place today, Academy of Business Program Trip to Thomas College. And then we have one that will be coming up in May, that's the Fire Science Program. We'll be heading up to Foster Technical Center up in Farmington in late May to announce those. So those are some excellent opportunities for our SRTC students. And then moving on to our Sanford School Committee Department Safe Return to School and Continuity of Instruction Plan. So I'm going to really put Beth on the spot here, see if she can go around and jump around here. First thing I want to do is show our average daily attendance that's taken place since our last two, since our last school committee meeting back on the 21st. And as you look across there, we have had a little bit dip in our overall attendance. Carl J. Lamb, we're hovering right around 90, sometimes a little above, sometimes a little bit below. So that's down a little bit. Margaret Chase Smith School, we're in, we've held somewhat steady, the low 90s. So that's down just a fraction. Sanford High School, we're in the high 80s, which is about where we've been for that. And then at the middle school, we've also had a, in the mid, mid 80s to high 80, high 80s at the middle school. And then at Pride Elementary, hovering right around in the 80s and the 90s for that. SRTC continues to be high in the upper 90s. So some of that is going through that I think we're talking about sickness that's going around impacting some of that. One of the things that we talked about was whether or not we're going to continue to send out the updates that we push out every day for the COVID, any positive cases that are in the district that we send district-wide. So I'm going to ask Beth, if you could bring it up on the screen from our website. I'm going to walk people through to show where the dashboard is and how you're able to do that. So there's our homepage. If you go up on the top calendar there, you'll see where it says COVID, the COVID-19. And so Beth is going to click on that. That brings us to COVID-19. And then right there in that big box, you'll see the daily summary of active positive cases. So if you click on that, that'll bring up what our dashboard is. And so as you go back, we update that. So you can see it's been updated for today. And then you'll see over on the right, the total number of positive COVID-19 cases identified at those particular schools in the last 14 days. And we also list when the last positive case was. So that's been, we've been continuing to be able to update that. So as you can see that, we have had an uptick at the Sanford Middle School in terms of positive cases. As we check into those, we don't see any links to those or any, anything that would have any events or anything that's been able to do that, that we can be able to tie into. And as of today, this year, we've had a total of over 1,200 positive cases associated with our school. But those have leveled off for the most part where we are this spring. One of the things we're, I think, as we look at that, if you want to back out of that and go right to the, back to the home screen, go all the way back to the home screen. We were going to talk about whether or not it came up on whether or not we want to continue to send the messages out with that. And with us seeing our cases holding steady and in some cases increasing, what I would offer up for a suggestion would be that we adjust what we send out and we now send those out to only the individual schools impacted. Okay, so for example, normally if we had two positive cases, one at one of our elementary schools and one at the middle school, we would send that message out to everyone. Now what I'm proposing is that we would send that message out to just, if it was at that particular school that you had a positive case. So you would receive that at the, if you're connected to Carl J. Lamb School, for example, or the middle school, that's when you would receive it if there was a positive case. And not sending that out to everyone for that. That's what I would recommend for us to do now and then continue to push people to have them see the, direct them to the dashboard so that they can be able to monitor those cases. So that would be my recommendation that we, that we make that adjustment with the idea that eventually we're going to be moving towards not notifying people that way. If you go back to the website, I did want to move over to, as you can see up there in the top banner, the next one is a 2021-2022 Return to School Plan. And so if you click on that, what you'll now find, that would have brought you to our plan, but we've made some changes to our plans in the last month or so. And so what I've done is put an update there so that when the first change we made to our strategies was back on a letter that I sent out on March 3rd. So if Beth clicks on that, you'll then see that was the letter that went out that let us know that on March 9th, we were going to make changes to our masking. If you want to back that out, then I sent a letter out on the 11th and that was when in addition to the masking, we also suspended the mitigation strategies. So there's where that letter is and that's where you also had an opportunity to see the updates to the mitigation strategy as well as the frequently asked questions. So if you back that out, then you can see there's where those mitigation strategies are, the adjustments to those. And then you'll go back and we'll see the updates that we made. And then if you go to the frequently asked questions, that helped guide us around these decisions, that went there. And then if you go back at the bottom of that page, you'll see what we did approve back in August as far as our reopening plan. So that's just an adjustment now. People are able to kind of see that, to see our progression in terms of how things have gone. We have not met in the York County Emergency Management Agency. Those meetings have gone biweekly. So we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. All indications are that we're holding steady and I think my recommendation would be to continue on with what we're doing and the changes that we've made to that. I do want to also take the time to talk about pool testing. That's something that the main depart, we are expecting the main Department of Education to announce some information regarding pool testing this coming week or next week. And part of that update is going to be the future of pool testing and when it will sunset or when it will end. And I did want to use that as an opportunity for us to bring up some of our data because we have seen a significant drop-off in our participation for pool testing. I wanted to thank Carl J. Lamb Elementary School Nurse Amy Humphrey, who's really been helping us in terms of coordinating that pool testing. But as you can see here up on the screen, the highest participation we had at the high school was, for staff, was 68. The highest number of students was 228. If you look at the people who are currently signed up, those have decreased down to 58 and 135. And then if you actually look at who tested last week, you're looking at, those numbers are down to 30 and 69. And so, and it's similar right on down. If you can look at the middle school, they've had some, a drop-off. And then we weren't able to get the data last week for the elementary schools, but those have also dropped off significantly for that. So I know in our York County Superintendent's meeting last Friday, we were asked about that. And so as I reported out, I know we've seen a decrease for that. What we're hearing as we talk to our nurses is that many families and many people are taking advantage of the home tests to be able to do that, that if they feel that their children are symptomatic, they're using those home tests and those are working well and helping us in terms of staying out. Okay, so that's the update in regarding for the update for the return to in-person learning and our continuity of instruction plan. Any comments? Feedback?
I just, on the spreadsheet that when you go to the Sanford School page or the app and you go to the COVID and it says the last 14 days, is, I was just curious why it's 14 versus 10? Just because, if there was a specific reason, just because it had changed?
No, we haven't changed. We've kept it there ever since we've done that, all the way going back to our dashboard. So that probably could be something that we could update just in terms of, to go along with those adjustments. That's how we've done, we've run this dashboard right from the beginning and we've just kept it that way. So that's probably something that does need updating.
And then just regarding to the, the recommendation with the instant alerts that go out with specific schools, I guess my, I mean, this is my opinion, that I'm nervous that, the feedback I'm receiving is that people just are like ready for those to be done. And I can, I understand like just going, like if it's the middle school, you're just allowing or informing the middle school parents. What I'm concerned about is that parents are going to be like discontinuing the alerts, going to their phone because they're just like, I'm done. I've had a couple of people say that. So what, you know, what would be unfortunate is that then they're then missing future instant alerts that go out on the phone because they're just done with getting COVID updates. So I personally would like those to just be done completely. And then with the pool testing, I also feel like it's time to...
John?
Not COVID. Superintendents, I thought, it's just an observation. See, most of the schools in the 86 to 91%. The SRTC is 97%. Lack of interest, so.
John?
Actually, because I believe students in, we have a presentation here, they have to be at the SRTC. Which is, which is coming back to what you're saying, that...
They want to be there.
I was thinking about it, like sort of readjusting back into the normalcy of not having masks and I don't know, kids having a hard time adjusting with that, whether it's anxiety or just being nervous about it or...
When I say that, I don't want to put Troy on the spot, but they have to be there for a certain amount of hours.
Right. I did, I figured it was more like maybe a little mental health issue, like, hey, trying to get used to it again.
Jen?
Well, I just think, I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying, but in mainstream classrooms, you're also dealing with a higher density and a smaller space, which allows for more spread of illness and just having younger children. spread of illness and just having younger children in school settings. I think that that illness right now is a real factor and indication of what's going on with our attendance. And I think that was to be expected and everyone expected that post, taking the masks off. So I think it's just a little blip and nothing to really be super concerned about. Obviously, continue to watch the data and see how it trends. And the hope would be with spring coming and fresh weather and, you know, but I think that, you know, you're comparing an apple to an orange when you're talking about an SRTC classroom and a mainstream classroom because of density.
Good points. Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, we'll move on to Sanford News. And first one we'll start with is Sanford High School. You may recognize that person. Congratulations to Bella as she has been selected to receive the 2022 Maine Principals Award. And there's a picture of her and Principal Peterman with that. And that is given to high school senior in recognition of academic achievement and citizenship. And did you, they already had the drawing. Do you know if you were able to, if you won in the drawing?
So I wasn't able to watch it because I was writing in 40 minutes, you know, just always grinding.
What teacher did that to you?
Well, I won't name names. No, I love that teacher. But anyways, so I didn't get notified, but it was, it was a good, it was an honor anyways.
Sure. Kudos to you, Bella. Well deserved. There's more than 100 Maine public and private high schools in the state and you're, they take one from each school and you're the one for Sanford High School. So congratulations. That's awesome. And then we'd already talked about Mamma Mia, and there is the cast last Friday before school, they were warming up for their classmates as they came in. And there's another picture of the cast and crew. Is that, is that the outfit you're talking about there, Grace?
It sure is. Just look how awesome it is.
Yes, that speaks awesomeness. So what a performance. We've spoken about that. SRTC also as we moved there, they recently completed, competed in their Skills USA, and that's a leadership and skills conference. They held that up in Bangor. They had it, some of it was at least in person this year. And so we had 20 SRT students win medals in 13 different contests. We had 37 students compete in 25 separate for that. And some of them traveled up to Bangor for the one-day conference to compete against other CTE students throughout the state. And our gold medal winners will have the opportunity to go on to the Nationals, and that's going to take place this June. And this year, that'll take place in Atlanta, Georgia. Skills USA is a student-run organization promoting leadership training and skill development for CTE students through collaboration with industry and education. And there's a list of our winners there. And for our Sanford students, Gold, Benjamin English in Precision Machining Technology. We also had Curtis Voder in Technical Drafting, won a gold. Hunter Stevens in Technical Drafting, won a silver. Dan Farrell in Auto Tool ID, won gold. And Madison Lawrence won a silver in Tool ID Collision. And Robert Baucher won gold in Internet Working. And Lucille Utgard is a state officer, winning gold, also representing Sanford. So congratulations to not just our Sanford students, but all the SRT students for a job well done. Over at Sanford Middle School, as we moved there, they had their talent show. This was Sanford's Got Talent. It made a return after a one-year hiatus, and we had a packed house, over 250 audience members. We had 25 student acts perform. This was sponsored by our Jobs for Main graduate. And what I like about this is our JMG students are really front and center and really in this whole event, making it go off and work. We also had a lot of staff volunteers, which I liked as well, for everything from preparing the judges and raffles and concessions and much more. Each one of our JMG students had a specific job that they applied and interviewed for and took seriously, which was clear. And so there's a picture of our judges. If we go to the next slide, you'll see our winners. First place was Courtney Orr, second place Morgan Bailey, third place Claire Davy, and in fourth place are Disney dancers featuring Aubrey Janowski, Adriana Young, Kyla Robinson, Larry Olf Westgate, Kenner Robinson, and Mrs. Cordo. Congratulations. And fifth place Chloe Griffin. And then at Carl J Lamb School, Mrs. Lapointe's fourth graders have pen pals. These are pen pals through the Global Academy, and they're coming from the state of Minnesota. And we're hoping that this, I'm planning for this to continue through the end of the school year, and eventually we'll come with a Zoom call so that students can see who they've been writing to all year. That's pretty neat. And then Mrs. Lewin Grover is teaching our kindergarten students to build structures. There you go. There's a proud group right there. C.J.L. K-4 classroom trophy winners for the spirit challenges on Friday. There's our picture of our challenge winners and their trophies. And then Mrs. Gillis's third and fourth graders, their first directive drawing was a funny monster. And then they were directed the steps, but encouraged to use their own choice of line or squiggle to add to their own flair. And then you can see how they all follow the same steps, but guess what? They all create their own unique, beautiful masterpiece. And there's Sherri Frichette from the Sanford Elks Club donating sneakers to part of the sneaker drive. And a big thank you to the Elks Club in Sanford for their support there. And over at Margaret Chase Smith School, we had, they're working on coding when they go to the library during their student enrichment groups, learning how to use, how computers use a code, a specific set of instructions to learn what to do from a programmer. They started with unplugged coding, writing a set of instructions on paper, and then moving to coding a B-bot. Strength and agility, you got Ms. Tibbetts is back with us. And there in second grade classes, we're using their balancing skills, had the opportunity to rotate through various stations that test their strength and endurance. And that looks like some things I definitely couldn't do. Then colors for courage, students dressed in bright colors. As you remember, the monthly theme was courage for their March Spirit Day last Thursday. Colorful there. And then the Chickadee Book Award. The past 10 weeks have been a lot of excitement as they completed their unit on the Chickadee Award. And what that is, each year, 10 books are selected by a group of Maine librarians and teachers to be eligible to win the award. And then students across the state, K-4, read the books and then vote for their favorite to win the state award. And the Chickadee Award is that's specific to the state of Maine. While some books will win awards like the Newberry Medal, the Chickadee Award is special because the winner is determined by students. And I know you're all waiting to know what MCS voted for, but it was This Way, This Way, Charlie by Karen Levis as their building winner. And then over at Pride Elementary, they're back outside. There's our new playground there with that. And then it's awesome to be able to drive by and see that as kids are outside being involved in that. Then we also had our own Mr. Hathaway, who's in the audience today. We thought this would be nice to also feature Mr. Hathaway as he paid a special visit to Pride Elementary for third and fourth graders, as he shared his knowledge of maple syrup making. And earlier in the week, Mr. Hathaway had sent over a video for students to see how he collects the sap and boils it down. And then in person, he showed how the tree is tapped and some other facts about that. And then it was finished with ice cream topped with maple syrup from Mr. Hathaway's trees. Pretty neat there. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. And as always, we wrap up with Sanford Community Adult Education, and they're currently working hard to earn their high school credentials. They want to highlight a student recently passed the HSET official science test, now has one more test to pass just to earn the, to earn their HSET. And I guess if you heard any hooting or hollering, it was out of the community adult education celebrating her success. That's awesome with that. And that's the school news. Lot going on.
Lot of good stuff going on. Okay, directors reports. First, we have SRTC Building Trades Program presentation.
Sure. So if I could have, we've got some guests joining us tonight, the aforementioned Mr. Hathaway, if you want to come on up. And Peg Lavasser and Mark Patterson are here. You've heard me mention in the past, talking about SRTC and our house building projects. And so I thought it would be a nice opportunity for people to come in and talk about how that works, both last year's project and also this year. So I'll turn it right over to Mr. Hathaway and have at it.
Started back in the 70s, and we continue that tradition. But what we've done differently is for the last five years, and this is our third house doing this, is we've been doing the houses right here, right at the school, right behind my shop, and it's a modular build. So this is the fourth house that we've done as a modular. But we're working with Mark Patterson and Pat Co. And with the generous donations of the different local contractors and suppliers, we've been able to do a turnkey package. So we were able to finish the house as far as we can at school. Both my, both groups of my students are involved in the build. Our residential wiring program's involved, they do all the wiring for us. And this year with our new plumbing program, they started today roughing in the plumbing. So, you know, we're trying to get in, obviously, our architectural design students are doing some of the drawings for us. So we have a lot of different components of students involved in the project. But we're able to finish the project from start to finish. And for me, that's huge for my students because they get to see it from the foundation, we'll go over and watch Williams Foundations put it in for us, to them finishing off the inside of the house. And then the plus side is they get to meet the owners typically. And that's been a highlight for my students. You know, we've done numerous projects, but the one that the students bite into the most is definitely the house project. There's never a dull moment. We're always working, they're always engaged, and it's a ton of fun for the students, as long as we're such a great learning opportunity. But to be able to do it start to finish, again, this is our third year, it's been incredible. It really has been. And so we're being, we'll be able to, after the sale of this house, be completely self-deficient. And we'll be able to continue to still get donations, and what we'll do is be able to take that money, roll it over, and be able to offer scholarships to our students, to all the students that are involved in the bills themselves. So that is our ultimate goal, but it wouldn't happen without Mark, without our project manager. And now we have Peg as our project manager, and obviously without the community. It's been, it's been huge. So, you know, it's great to be able to showcase what my students are working on. You know, we always welcome people coming in. It's a blast to have people come in and walk through the house. We had some visitors today from York High School, and they had never seen it. So it was cool to kind of take them through. But I'll hand it over to. So we have some pictures and videos of the house builds.
I'm Jack Callis, and I enjoy doing a lot of things.
What did you learn while working on the house construction project?
I learned a lot from it. Like I learned how to lay out walls, how to lay out the flooring, the ceiling, all that. I've learned how to hit stuff with hammers, screw stuff in the wood and stuff.
All right. What was something about this project that you really enjoyed?
I really enjoyed the people that are in my class, and I really enjoyed talking to them and helping, really helping them solve problems in the class.
How do you see yourself using these skills in the future?
I took this course because I thought I wanted to do carpentry, but then I changed my mind. And I still really enjoy it, but I think it's going to be useful for me when I actually buy a house.
What would you like people to know about this project? Is it important to the program?
I feel like, yeah, it's really important because you learn so many useful skills, throughout the whole project, like how to use so many tools and how to know what pieces of wood or stuff to use.
My name is Vinny. It's my second year in the Building Trades Program, a senior this year. I learned pretty much everything because I didn't really know much about carpentry before I took the course. So I learned everything from framing to flooring, roofing, pretty much everything.
What was something about this project that you really enjoyed?
I just enjoyed learning some new things. It's always cool to learn new things that you're going to use eventually. And the people, pretty cool people, cool teacher. And when you have a good group of people, it makes it a lot more enjoyable. In the future, I know I want to do a trade. I'm not sure what trade I want to use or do. So I feel like carpentry in general is just a good tool for pretty much any trade. And also, when I get a house, I want to work on my house, so the carpentry comes into play there.
What would you like people to know about this project? And how is it important to the program?
It's important to the program because I feel like it's a good way to show everyone else that we've actually learned a lot in the class because we're building a house and we're going to sell it to somebody, and it has to meet a certain like level in order for us to sell it, which kind of proves that we've actually learned a lot in the class.
What's your, who are you?
I'm Grace. It's my second year in the Building Trades Program, and I'm a senior.
What did you learn while working on the house construction project?
I learned a lot from planning out flooring, getting blueprints, and like framing out walls and doing everything.
What was something about this project that you really enjoyed?
I really enjoyed watching the house come together from starting at the very beginning, the line of the floor, to finally putting like the shingles on the roof. And it's a really good break from like the normal academic classes we had.
How do you see yourself using these skills in the future?
I feel like even if I don't go into the tree, knowing how to take care of a house and being able to work on things yourself without having a parent help is a good tool to have.
What would you like people to know about this project? And how is it important to the program?
I think it's very important to the program. It's kind of how we make all of our money in order to do further projects with the program. And so doing this project is really fun for all of us because we get to see every step of building a house, and we get to keep the program going.
All right. What want to be said?
So the history of the house project, we've been doing houses for quite a few years. But this is our third house that we're taking on that is a turnkey package. So with working with National Home Builders Association and Mark Patterson, who's a local contractor, we've been able to build three modular homes. This is our third one from start to finish, and we've been selling it as a turnkey package. It's been a great project for my students. They get the experience of building a stick-built home from the ground all the way to the finished product on the inside. They get to be part of the project here at school and as well on the job site when we get the house moved over and put back together. And they're responsible for putting it all back together and finishing it off so we can actually sell it. With it being a turnkey package, all the flooring is done, the rooms are painted, everything's done, kitchen cabinets, everything, and as well as the appliances in the kitchen. Somebody's able to buy it and move right in. So these pictures are of the first house that we did that's up on Hanson's Ridge Road. And then the one we just completed over the summer is on Jagamill Road. The current house that we're building is going to be located over on James Ave, where we're purchasing a lot. So that'll be, that'll be set probably in the fall, and we'll finish it right after that.
Hey, Mark Patterson, Pat Co Construction, also a member of the Maine Home Builders and Remodelers Association. And this has been a fantastic project. You know, I raised money in various ways for different organizations, Legacy Foundation and so forth, but this is so easy. I mean, I just call people and they just say, it's for the kids. I mean, I just call people and they just say, it's for the kids, let's do it. I called last Friday, last Thursday it was, because we've paid, a lot of times we'll pay a portion of. We might get it from cost, from local suppliers and so forth. But I was able to call the tub company, and it's over $2,000 donation for the tubs, for the house. And that's the way it goes. I mean, I just have to get in front of them. And they say, oh, yeah, this is a no-brainer, it's approved. So this year, the last house we just finished, we raised about in a combination of things. We counted as the donations we get from different vendors, which you'll see in a minute, you know, people like F.R. Carroll, Williams Foundation, Sherwin-Williams, you know, the list is, goes on and on. Whatever I need, I just make a call and the people's, they just say, yeah, we're going to support this 100%. You know, I mean, obviously, one of the big challenges we're having is everyone's having, including the school, is finding employees. And so these folks want to get folks trained in carpentry, electrical, and now plumbing. So it's a fantastic opportunity for them to support and promote getting people in the trades and working. So it's just fantastic. The Home Builders and Remodelers Association Maine, a lot of the folks that donated are members of that. But it goes outside of that. It literally is, you know, there's a door manufacturer out of Massachusetts, donated the doors. Another one donated the interior doors, the vinyl siding. I mean, it's just on and on. And really, all it is is an ask, and it's an easy ask. So that's been the real sort of pleasure of being able to work with this program and see the kids excited about building something. My wife gets kind of tired of me saying it, but, you know, I'll drive by and say, yeah, we built that house. Well, these are the kids saying forever, they'll say, I built that house. And that's pretty cool. So, real great stuff. Thank you. Yeah, I forgot to mention, this year's been our most successful. And we will have raised, on the last one, it was a combination of kids donate their labor, they're providing the labor. That comes as a donation, okay? And then obviously, all the different people that donate also. But this year, we raised over $160,000 for this program. And that goes right into the, as Troy said, right into the fund that allows us, instead of borrowing, not stealing, but borrowing money here and there to finish, you know, pay for the project that was going. Now it's self-funded, and we're actually going to be able to start giving scholarships. And in the future, we're going to be able to give some great scholarships to the kids in these different programs. And that's everyone who helped, whether it's the video people that put that together, the Building Trades, the electricians, the plumbers, drafting. It's just a great program.
And I just wanted to follow up that this doesn't happen at every CTE school. Although there are, you know, 26 CTE schools around the state, and most of them have a carpentry program, if not all of them. You know, only a half dozen or so actually build a actual house. And here, it's a special coordination with Mark. Other places just build it for themselves, and they ship it out, and the kids never see where it goes. You know, they just build it on-site, and somebody comes and takes it with a trailer. Westbrook may be the only one that has it close, but they have other programmings that allow them to make the foundation. They have an excavating program, so they do the whole set. But most schools just see it go out, go down the street, and they don't get to see the whole process. So this is a really interesting and exciting collaboration, especially with the Home Builders and Remodelers Association, that the amount of funds that are raised is extraordinary in comparison to what other schools have put out there. They, some of them are self-funded, but they're not, and it's like, okay, they're looking at, you know, maybe $5,000 for scholarships. You know, we're looking at $20,000. We're looking at a lot more. And the ability to be stable, because part of the issue with doing a house is you never know what the market's going to be. And that, and I don't know if Troy mentioned that in the past, but in the past, you know, it was hard to sell a house sometimes because the market was down. So this gives us a nice buffer. If the market goes down, then the kids can still get that experience of making a house. So it's a really great, great for the school and something they're always, you know, it's unique in what you have going on, and it's to be something to be proud of.
Any questions from the school committee? Any comments?
I would just like to hear from Grace, because she worked on this. And so how did this project translate for you based on what you were previously doing in the classroom? She's in the electrical wiring.
Um, yeah, I was, um, we were working on just wiring things up. He wanted to make sure that we knew how to do everything before we went out to the house. And so it was really cool to see how it translated, because we have cubicles in our classroom. It was cool to see how it translated from the cubicle into like a real, like, work situation and in the actual house. And I thought it was really fun to go out there. Yeah, we blew a fuse one time during theater, and she was like, I can fix it. So I just, I mean, it's really, I know a lot of people in those houses who worked on that house, it's just really inspiring. Like, they literally built that house, like, for somebody to live in. And I think that's really cool to see.
I'd like to thank Mark personally, because kudos to you for pulling it all together. Troy, you're kind of a legend in this school, so it's great to have you. Students need mentors, that's huge. I think one of the things you also said was for students to ride by for decades to come to say, you know, participating in building that house is really, really pretty cool. Thank you a lot, thank you very much.
I'd like to say, it sounds like a dream come true, really. This program, everything about it is like a dream come true. It's what you would say, hey, if you could have a program, what would you like it to be like? And, I mean, you guys are doing it, and thank you so much. It's amazing, and thank you for coming tonight.
One more comment. Matt, I don't know if you announced it earlier, but the Saturday night, we had another thing with SRTC, was the dedication of the fire apparatus bay, in honor of our memorial of our former assistant fire chief, Steve Cutter. And the place was packed. And that was a $25,000 gift given memorial, a bunch of small donations. And it was just, you know, I was there for it. It's just, makes you feel good, you know, that we're making this money available for things that aren't covered in the normal school budget. So it was a great event. It was packed, even though it was busy over at Mamma Mia. We did have some parking spaces. And there weren't a lot of parking spaces, so. Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
It's awesome. It's good to hear that both were very well attended. Steve Bussier, you're next.
Good evening. This afternoon, we had our April Safety Committee report. Our last meeting was in February, beginning of February. So just tonight, talk a little bit about some of the injuries we've seen so far this year. From January to March, we've had 26 total employee injuries. As we've spoken about earlier this school year, that's partially due because of increased reporting. As we look at the injuries we're seeing with employees, a lot of those have to do with slips, trips, and falls. And the other big area is injuries that occur while working with students. And since February, we have seen an uptick in those injuries. Managing behavior, professional development, and ongoing support are important to support staff. And this Wednesday, the elementary ed techs K through four will be receiving behavior management training with one of our behavior coaches, Kristi Parent. This is similar to the training that our teachers have experienced throughout the year. And so we think this would be a good opportunity to provide some support with those folks to address this need that we're seeing in the school system. In terms of student incidents, we've had 19 year-to-date, and that goes back to September. Those are pretty typical injuries we see with slips, trips, and falls. Happen on the playground, a couple of minor cuts. In general, in our buildings, the number of safety concerns we have seen have really dramatically decreased. I've been on the Safety Committee when I was a teacher, as an admin. And I think the number of issues that we were seeing on a month-to-month basis have really decreased. And I think that's a tribute to the school construction projects and the quality facilities we have. And also, I'd like to thank Don Nichols and Jason Dudley, who have been responsive, I think, in addressing the issues that have been brought forth by the members each month. Moving forward with the Safety Committee, we're really looking to move on from COVID, on from construction, and really looking at reviewing some of our safety protocols that are currently in place, and seeing if any adjustments need to be made to those protocols. On Wednesday, we talked about what our ed techs are doing. On Wednesday, ERD staff will be participating in mandated reported training with the Department of Health and Human Services. Staff are required to receive initial training with the DHS. And every four years, we need to have a refresher training. School counselors, social workers, and administrators will be attending a live session with the DHS in the Performing Arts Center. And the remaining staff will be completing an online training module. This is important training, as we're required to report when we see possible child abuse. And I'd just like to thank Beth Letourneau, who's been, played an important role in organizing that training. It's that time of year again where we start talking about facilities planning. Over the past weeks, I've met with YMCA, the Rec Department, Don Nichols, the Facilities and Maintenance Manager, Holly Hartley from Food Service and other school staff, lead summer programming to begin that process. One of the challenges with summer planning for facilities this summer is, has to do in regards to food service. Last summer, federal food service waivers were in place that allowed food to be served at any location. And individuals could take that food and go eat any place in the community. They didn't have to stay at the site. Unfortunately, those waivers are set to expire on June 30th, as it stands now. So what does that mean in terms of Sanford? What that means for us is that programming at Margaret Chase Smith School would not be possible if we wanted to serve both breakfast and lunch for our students. So as it stands currently, MCS would not be available for summer use. There is movement at the federal level to extend those waivers. Last week, the Support Kids No Red Tape Act was introduced in Congress to extend those waivers beyond the January, no, not the January, the June 30th deadline. And so we'll see if those pass. But just to give you a heads up, as we start planning, that's one of the barriers that we're working around. We have enough space, that's a good thing, but that's just something to put on your radar.
Because what we do, Steve, is we try to coordinate our summer programming and line up with the breakfast and lunch distribution. So in some of these schools that wouldn't qualify right now, we have to kind of be creative and work around that to be able to make sure we have that programming at a place where lunch and breakfast can be served.
Correct, correct. And that's all I had this evening. Any questions about anything, or?
Questions or comments? Thank you so much. Okay, moving on. New business, none. Old business, none. Resignations, retirements, staff appointments, and staff transfers.
Sure, I'll start with announcing the resignations and a couple retirements. Resignations, Dave McCall, eighth-grade girl's soccer coach. Helen Hemonway, kitchen personnel at the high school. Devon Garabedian was on a one-year leave of absence, and she's let us know that she will not be returning. And then a couple retirements for people who've been with the Sanford School Department for a number of years, a long time. Denise Alair is the special education teacher for the resource room at Sanford Middle School. And fifth-grade teacher Barbara Noon. We both received their retirements this recently. And so we want to thank them tremendously for all of what they have done and all the impact they've had on the Sanford School Department, starting first and foremost with their students, but also the impact that they've had with their colleagues and with the community as well in doing that. I know when I first got to Sanford, I got to attend the Community Adult Education graduation. And you've heard us talk about what a wonderful night that is. But I remember that was one of the first times I met Barbara Noon. She was there because a former student of hers was graduating from adult education that she'd stayed connected with. So that always stood with me as Barbara being a powerful advocate and connections with her students. And so, kudos to both Denise and Barbara for all of their service to Sanford School Department. We do have a few appointments to announce. John Carter, third-shift custodian down at the high school. And then we've got a couple are looking ahead to the summer school, extended school year program. Jed Russell will be back again as the director. We, Jamie Lovejoy moved over from the MCS support and transition position into a classroom. So to replace Jamie, we have Justine Williams in that position over at MCS. And then also, new football assistant coach for the high school team, Joe Messix, who is a teacher over at Sanford Middle School. And I know when I met Joe, he played football for Hussin University. So I think that's a nice opportunity for both Joe and our program. Also have some transfers to announce. I already mentioned, Justine will be going into that support and transition position. She's moving over from a special education ed tech two position. And then our softball coaches at the middle school are going to be switching. So Ashley will be going from eighth-grade coach to seventh grade. Vicki will be going from seventh grade to eighth grade. And then a couple custodian transfers to announce. Brian Danus will be moving from the second-shift custodian over to the third-shift custodian at the high school. And Armand Doran will be moving from the second shift at the middle school. And he's going to be moving over to the second shift, one that will be Community Adult Education, Anderson Learning Center and Central Office. And those are all the transfers.
Thank you. We don't have any staff nominations and no policies and procedures to go through. Items for future agendas? Okay, calendar announcements.
Sure. So tomorrow night, the Budget Committee will be making their presentation to the City Council at their meeting. That starts at 6 o'clock. And then also this week, we have our next Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation meeting. And then a pre-K advisory meeting is also this week on Thursday. Dropout Prevention Committee will meet a week from tomorrow, next Tuesday. Then our next school committee meeting will be on April 25th, and that'll be the Monday following the school vacation. And then we'll also have a Level Three grievance hearing to the school committee, and that'll begin at 3:30 on Monday, the 25th. A couple other things for the school committee right now. Please hold May 2nd for an executive session. And then also, SRTC Advisory Committee meeting, that's been rescheduled. That'll take place this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. That'll be done via Zoom. And then for John and Amy, food service negotiations continue this Wednesday at 1:30 at the high school. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking to have the Schedule Advisory Committee on April 13th. I hope to get that time there finalized soon. And then a couple other things that we need to schedule. John and Jonathan, if you could meet with Cheryl and I to discuss the latest custodian contract, information that we've received, if we could schedule that. And then I think the other thing that we'd like to do prior to we go on the school vacation, right, Steve? Is we're going to need an executive session for a disciplinary hearing. And so we're going to need a minimum of three. So that's something we're hoping to try to schedule also within the next two weeks. So be on the lookout for Cheryl Drisco to be sending something out to people to kind of gauge your availability. As always, busy, a lot going on as we try to coordinate that and organize that in the best efficient way that we can. I know Jonathan and I were part of the Charter Review Committee this morning that's going on with the city. They went through Article Five, I think, which has to do with the school department. And now they're... And now they're on to Article Six, which is involving the Budget Committee. And so Jonathan and I will be back at it next Monday to continue that conversation as well.
Last comments, anything? All right. Recommendation to adjourn the meeting at 7:14. Yes, I know. Right, motion, motion, all in favor? Yes, awesome.
Who made the motion?
John, and then John. Mapes, and then Rue.
All right.
Thank you so much, everybody.